I'd like to call this special meeting of the Board of Trustees to order. It is Friday, March 28. I did. It is 7:05. Let the record reflect that Petron, Peterson, Newberry, LaCassio are present. Along with Matt Prog, Chris Brandina, and Rob McCarver. The first item on the agenda today, update of Newtown Hall request for proposals, the RFP process. Robert Seaver, Keystone Associates.
Okay. In a nutshell, I can say that we have a project that is on budget and currently is on schedule. And I'll go into how these things work here in just a minute. What I'm going to do quickly is recap the bid process for the board. And then I'll go into the low bids here and our recommendation ultimately for contractor award. The, and I know Matt's put together a statement here that I'm going to repeat a little bit, but in terms of the bid, the advertisement went out. And drawings or bid package released on February 27, which is based on the schedule that we gave out to the board back in December. It's improvised when we closed in February. So I'm going to be kind of repeating that because we follow the schedule pretty much to the T. Packages went out starting on the 27th. We had nine general contractors pick up packets and a number of other people subs and other interested parties as well. There was a pre-bid conference on March 4th at TEN where we did that all nine. It was mandatory. We had all nine GCs in that conference. It was here in this room and then onsite. The purpose of that was to ask questions and go over any issues, scheduling whatever came up. Relatively few questions there. We did issue an addendum to the contract based on that or to the bid based on that discussion. Pretty much in terms of bid process, we had great participation. It was pretty much a standard process. I call it flawless here. We didn't have any major exceptions or people complaining about anything. It was a three and a half week process. The bids were due on last Friday, 21st at 2:00. All the bids were received, well, I should say seven bids were received by that time. It's pretty classic general contractor process. They were all sitting in the parking lot. We got all seven bids in about 10 minutes, between 1:50 and 2:00 P.M. They are all timed. They are timestamped by the clerk and recorded in that fashion. Subsequent to that, the selection committee did meet. This is the committee that was appointed by this board to review those things, the seven bids. And the committee has met several times to kind of digest that stuff. The bids themselves had a base bid for a building. Project is pretty much the same as it was when we submitted to DOLA last August. There's been a lot of detailing in that, in such that this project's the same. The bid had a base number and then based on our concerns that we might be out of budget frame, we could have a number of deducts as part of the bid as well, number nine. The deducts were a wide range of things to allow us flexibility to negotiate with general contractors once they came aboard if we were, but obviously we wanted everyone to hit it and be right on our budget. But he had a lot of times we have, he wanted to have options. The deducts primarily were things purposeful. We did want to isolate the earthwork homes project because part of our agreement with the Department of Local Affairs at state level is an in-kind donation. And the in-kind donation as it's certain ad application is that public works will do the earthwork, you know, primary earthwork on the project. It's not utilities, but most of the major duty in the earth. We wanted that out there just to keep it competitive. If that number came in and grew really good, then we might, then we might have shipped it to the rate of it. As things worked out here, some of the other deducts were things like take the porch off, take the tower off. Some pretty big soul searching things out there. So we just, the idea being to provide options. The people that bid the project, I should give a call out here. We have seven people bid at Coopstone, Ed Green Construction, Elder Construction, Arc Klein Construction, Anderson, Bassett Construction, and Carwell. Of those seven firms, or of those seven, five of them are based primarily in Tyler and El Paso County. One is based in Fubbo and one is, whole base is Denver, but they have an office. And Carwell has an office in Colorado, so no one from further away than Denver. The bid results were, the base bid results were sent out to the contractor group on Monday. We had a chance to kind of bet the numbers a little bit. I believe the board was copying on the results, but I'll just read it for the record here. Coopstone was 684, 582. Ed Green was 693, 369. Elder was 699, 798. Arc Klein was 746, 214. Anderson was 7, 7, 7, 6, 6, 6. Bassett was 833, 898. And Carwell was 1.12 million. So we had a little bit of range in the seven, but from an architect standpoint, I was very pleased that the low seven are actually within about $14,000. So it's pretty competitive there. All of those numbers as the state that the email released are over the budget. We did do a little bit of research here. The money that's available in the town comes in a number of different forms here, whether it's DOLA, Building Department, Prince of Green, Mount Falls, or PHN supplement. So we did do some quick math here just to re-verify where we're moving the budget because certain aspects, not only is DOLA tied to our project, DOLA has specific amounts of money for land purchase which has occurred and then specific amounts for the building itself. So we wanted to isolate just exactly to the die how much is left for the building itself. There's other fees that are like the AD, the architectural engineering fees, the land closing costs, things that are not the building. We want to make sure those are out. There are a few number, a number of costs, about 27,000 that are direct costs of the town. There are materials and soil testing, furnishings, you know, lines, that kind of stuff. Utility costs and other things that are on the town side. So we wanted to make sure we had a budget double check. Roughly speaking, the budget for the building is about 556,000. Subject to a little bit of verification with the clerk. So when you see those numbers, well, as I just rattled off here, it's 684. So that's why I said we're effectively over budget. The task in that scenario is to look at those deducts. You took them all, a couple hundred thousand. And to look at those deducts critically in terms of what our contract with DOLA is specifically and others. I mean, there's some things we can't take out of this and then other things have to do with soul searching about priorities, whether they're aesthetic priorities or camp priorities otherwise. There are definitely combinations of deducts that you'll get us into our budget. That was the thing we did right off the bat. The biggest thing in discussing this was just the soul searching as to what's important and what's less important. The idea is that we want to look at the budget and get not only in budget, but we want to have enough contingency. It's typical in a project of this nature, say 79% contingency as we go into Friday to cover unforeseen circumstances as we get out of the road. I should also mention, because I've mentioned the numbers here, that we also asked contractors to submit qualifications, an estimated schedule for the project, and anything else that they thought to references, things that would build their case because as I said, you look at these bottom numbers, they're very close. When the committee met, we looked at certain things that were easy things. The biggest deduct on this thing is the earthwork. It's the biggest number on the whole project, period. Depending upon which excavator we looked at, we have prices depending on 80 and 150,000. So the deducts have fairly good range in there too. That was the biggest thing that the group decided to take because that's already kind of planned in the public works budget. And that's a separate budget discussion. So the biggest things in the deducts that were taken primarily were the excavation sites that the town can handle, the asphalt, the paving, which is not specifically a town requirement. And then I think the ever notable one is the table that you're setting at. We do have, we did design out a very nice category setup. But for the time being, unless we, we, our contingency, you've got the table you're looking at when you're discussing. So there's a few things we looked at. The things we didn't look at were things that we, that are in essence promised to other entities like the Building Department, the three core areas, sustainability or energy efficiency, fire resistiveness, and durability. So anything that had to do with things of that nature, we kind of put on the back burner. It's not to say we couldn't do these, that these are important priorities, not only for the town. I mean, not say during the weeds, but also in terms of people are grabbing this money. Other things in terms of the state, we have represented the state project in November, including square footage of the building. So anything that was detrimental to reducing the square footage, we shied away from. One of the options was to reduce the future expansion space of the building, not a huge amount of return. So anyway, the committee reviewed the deducts. At that point in time, we had two bidders that were within $3,000 of each other. 540 and 543, 540, 543,000. Based on that, we decided even though it's, the bid rules really stated it's a straight bid, that since they were so close, that we would give both those low bidders the opportunity to interview. Interview with me and project manager. We wanted to do a couple of things. We wanted to bet those numbers and make sure that they had everything that we felt needed to be included, that I felt needed to be included. And as well, we understood the deducts, what we were getting for the reduced cost. Those interviews occurred on Tuesday and Wednesday of this week. After those interviews, the other part of the interview was that both contractors had other suggestions and thought savings to the town that held both their cases. They both did an excellent amount of research for about a day and a half. We gave them a short period, but good participation from their subs, not during, not just during the bid, but also during the negotiation or interview phase. A lot of people came up with some interesting ideas here. Some of them, after our interviews, some of the ideas were simple spec change out, sort of the spec of the stone on the building, things like that. So I have spent time reviewing this, make sure we're comparable. Again, there were other suggestions that were not that easy. There were, or I guess I should say there were also just outright credits given back, which is normal. People look at their numbers and have a little bit of time to think about, say, well, there's a little float here. Maybe we can give something back to the project. It happened on both bidders, both GCs. There were other things, like I said before, that kind of touched into that, those core value areas. We said these are probably not things that we want to cut out of the project, energy efficiency, things of that nature. Certainly, we could take the stone out. It's, you know, 25, 26,000 dollars. But I think it'd be for me to be an architect, but that's kind of, those little details kind of give us a little character here. But certainly, the idea here is that we get into our budget and that we have enough money and enough float here and contingency, just in case there's something that happens. The most concerning when we get into the earthwork part of this project, once we get out of the ground, we're a little more confident we have control of this. But obviously, we've done the research and all that, but we do need very standard contingency. So with that said, I'm going to hand out two synopsis sheets. They detail the two low bidders. Low bidders, prior information, are Arc Klein and Ed Green Construction. And what I have done here at the top of the sheet is a synopsis. It shows the base bid of every one, all seven bidders. It also shows where they landed after our deduct discussion. And then under that, that gets into the specific interview process where they brought forth things to us and we reviewed those things as part of the committee. Some of these are similar. The one I just gave is Arc Klein. I won't go through the, there's a whole lot of numbers here and I won't go through all of this in detail unless you have questions. But you can see in the process, there's the base bid, there's the deduct number, and then there's a laundry list of other things, the cost savings things that each contractor came up with to get us to bid after cost savings at the bottom. So in Arc Klein's case, that shows about 515, 859. About, just shy of 41,000 in contingency, which is about 7.9%. And that's tied against the very bottom there, which is the available cost of the building itself, nothing else. Ed Green sheet, top is very similar, the bottom's dependent upon kind of the things that they brought up, but they have very similar things that they brought up. The difference of these two sheets are the cost savings ideas. Yes, the top spreadsheet part is all the same numbers. So the very bottom is specific to Green or Klein, so we have a little higher contingency. So with Green, we get down to the bottom, we have about 506, 792. That gives us about 9% contingency or 50,000 dollars. Not available, of course. Not, not that it's too far. But so all this is a sensitive kind of, it's a red bill of negotiation. So I don't want to go into any more specifics in terms of the subs and things of that nature. We do have a sub of this from both contractors. We have reviewed that. I can't say that there are some local subs on here, which is good, whether or some of it or not. But that's truly up to the GC that's looking at the project. We did, we did give some credence to local hires here, but obviously the criterion primarily is monetary based, especially since we were out of the budget. Though we certainly looked at qualifications wrong, but did help references here. And the references stood pretty highly, so I think they were doing their job right. On Green's side of this, it's like I said, we're asking tonight for permission to award negotiated contract. It isn't the same, this is the exact, the final thing. It's pretty darn close. The biggest issue with Greens that we need to resolve is the fact that they included taxes, sales taxes that they're bidding and some of the bidders did not, or Klein did not. So we know that Green is lower here on this page, but with taxes, they're probably lower than this, you know, lower, that they're better off. Everything else on those, those cost savings ideas are things that are pretty solid. In this case, their friend contract gave us 10 grand back and it's just the way people are looking at it, so. But that's, the only thing that's really in negotiation case here is just how much taxes are involved. Maybe something that we enter into your contract, the side recommendations, we enter into your contract on that they're below. And then that stuff kind of gets worked out as we move through it. So you do have some, that's not an easy game to do until they actually have tax ID numbers in the purchase process itself. So some of the big ones like, I can say in Green's case here, they've got Foxwood Calbreak with their lumber suppliers. So we do kind of know on some of the big numbers that there's, you know, what the tax would be, but there's a lot of, a lot of people involved. So I think we're relatively safe. When we look at these numbers, I think we're relatively safe and recommend that we award the project. And that's, that's not just me, that's the decision of the selection committee. And I would say that it's the number, but it's also how they performed in their interview. Both these contractors came to the table and have a lot of great ideas. And I'd say that there's some ideas here that get us to contract these other ideas that we'll kind of cut their pocket here and discuss as we go through the project. The building in my sense with the deducts, it's like I said, we maintain square footage, we maintain the detail. So we have our tower, we have our porches. I do want to isolate those things, so I do know how much they work. I won't joke, the main entrance porch is an expensive piece. But the rest of the building, I mean, we have to make those decisions on aesthetics. But that's, that's the street, that's the curb appeal. So, I mean, this group definitely discussed the deduct to take the porch off, the porches off the building. That'd be the easy one. But it was generally thought that if we do that, that we change the character of the project. There's not to say we can't take, sit a stone off, change some detail and that stuff. But at this point, we're actually with the budget where they're pretty much assured. So that's the, I think that's the long and short of it. I mean, more than you wanted to know, but if there's questions, please ask.
Been concise because you know people who are asking about some of these specific things, so thank you.
Well, and I was curious. You know, when we go to the framing contractors, and then this is very actively, there's a lot of wood manufacturers and framers, excavators too. When you ask those folks and you poll them, what can we change? We thought, the building itself beyond the porches is a very basic box with a truss, truss system on. Not too many responses came back on cost savings there. I mean, the size is just reducing the size of the building, but, you know, it's two by six frame with two by trusses. We aren't, it's not a very elaborately designed, it's a very basic system. We have put some money into line, you said, it's a small space.
It's basic, right?
Yeah. So, I mean, we haven't, I think we, with the budgets that came in over the summer, we would get them looking at savings because those numbers were showing us above budget debt. So that's also the driver of why we had these options in there. I can tell you that most general contractors hate it. We have like nine or 10, what if this, what if that kind of thing? But they all were pretty good players. We had pretty good feedback from that team. I know that some of the people I talked to indicated it was a fairly good communication process and fair game process. So at least that's from the people that were involved that did the project. So I'm feeling confident that either way, with these two that I've shown you, that we have excellent contractors.
Okay, great. Any further questions?
I just have a question. The 9% contingency, I want to make sure that I understand that. And that is what we have in our budget line, and that's the 50,000 we have in kind on the budget, right?
No.
That's something different. Well, no, that's why I asked because, because the numbers are similar.
There's two sides. You have to look at the expenses, which is pretty much what the sheet is. How much is the contractor going to charge us? And then the other side of it, which is the last hundred page, is where does the money come from? How much do we have?
Right.
So it's, it's a basic ledger. Not a basic one, it's probably more complicated than all of this.
So what, what is?
The 50 is cash money that you are not committed to. It's in, in the, it's in your budget, but it's not part of the contract.
See, that's why I'm asking if that was the, you're out of 50,000.
It would be more than four sheet problem.
Right, 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 I understand.
But it's not out of the budget. This is still out of the.
But it's not the end, it's not the end timeline?
No, it's not the end.
That's something different.
So if you don't want to change your budget right to your number, it's going to be programmed in because you know on construction, always something comes up. Prices can change overnight. Still think it works, because it's a concrete, more expensive. So that's where the contingency is all about. Contingency, to be clear, contingency in this case is for unforeseen circumstances onsite that can cover owner requested changes after the fact. One of the motivators here at 50,000, as I said, we took the asphalt out. That's somewhere around 30,000 depending upon which of the bidders you looked at here. If we manage this project well and there are no unforeseen things, which I can't guarantee that at all. But if we did well, there's, you know, you get to the end of the project and there's things like that also in the deducts that we put in there, very easy to put back in. I'd love to have 30,000 dollars going in the last couple of weeks of the project and say, you know, let's pay for it. So you very carefully looked at, I mean, we took stuff out, we very carefully looked at at the ability of things to manage properly and there's some way to add things back in too. So that's one of the big ones, because it's nicely put in the bargain.
So you're not being too picky in changing our idea of materials or you want the entrance on the other way after it's already built, right?
Changes are worth it. Changes are worth it. It's, it's one of those where we, it's been like the, you know, it's been a process here for at least for a year. The decisions build upon each other as you go through, so you hope to not have a conceptual. They come up, if you want to change the color of the siding, it's probably, we got a report. That's the other part of our vetting with our interviews with contractors and say, okay, if you gave us credit back for whatever, does that limit my choice of white, black, and hot pink for the wall color? Or do we have, you know, do we have a choice? And they, they have responded back. So that's, that's part of what my obligation is, is to make sure that, that you're not limited by two options on stuff.
So one of the, the part B of what Margaret was asking, because we've been asked, what is in the town budget, 55,000 is for the earthwork inside the in-kind?
That is roughly into the, or.
Right, okay, so that's where the in-kind is.
Right.
And that's it.
Their application to.
It's the same number almost, so that's where it was.
Yeah.
That's why I'm asking.
But one's the in-kind and one is how we just explain.
Right, okay.
How, and I can go into that just briefly. How do we get to 556? Maybe. And then subject to accounting review, because an architect can do this, so. DOLA, the DOLA grant was 493, 524. Above that, about 120 was for land. That releases a 372,052. SIRS, the town's insurance company has, that claim involves 151,000. That does not include the AD portion of the SIRS that's been paid separately.
And that's a completed project.
Just about the building.
That's a completed project.
Correct. And that's not going to change. I've been working on it a lot.
No, that's. As long as we complete the project.
Yeah, sorry. That was negotiated with SIRS within a month of the fire. Basically, they wanted to get that set. They didn't want to let it go this long. Their insurance company. There's 50,000 dollars for Pike's Peak Regional Building Department as a grant. And then there's, there's some funding, I believe it's Prince of Green, Mount Falls. There's an account which is an individual donation account.
There's a fire recovery fund that's made the 4,000.
Okay. And there's some, well, there's some things that we're looking at with DOLA. I won't go into too much detail about making sure that if we did not use all of our land acquisition funding, we can see if we can transfer that into the building fund. This number I gave you does not include that. There's some other things that, so I guess when you look at that, that's if you add those numbers up, you get, I think it's 583. And then we have about 27,000 in the aforementioned direct issues, direct building costs the town takes on. That's some CIC costs with moving utility poles, things that you typically an owner does with the utility company. We have an allowance because there's an underground water line that we do know of. If we hit it, we're going to have to deal with it. So we have some money in that for that. And then there's materials testing, concrete testing, salts compaction, things that are generally done not to the contractor but by an independent third party who works with that. So we're carrying about 27 there. That also includes things that we have in the money in the project, like window coverings, lines, whatever, these are all things. But when you take that 27 out, we have the 556.
Ashley, can you give me the first two DOLA numbers again?
The first two, 12672 is for land. The building is 372, 852. The total grant is 493, 524. The reason I'm flying by transferring funds is we spent about 112,000 to change on the closing, on the land cost itself, the acquisition. So obviously, there's a little bit of money in that budget, the implication might be that that could be transferred back in. The question to DOLA is, do you just get the money back or can we just transfer it to the other? And so they seemed to want to work with us on that. I don't think they want to even blow up the 8,000 either. Other areas I could point to, other than members of the project team, both the within town government and beyond, there is some negotiation with Power Strange Utilities or the utility fees and things of that nature. We obviously had an existing water tap in town hall before. They look like, a recent letter this week looks like Spring Utilities let us swap taps, which means that we won't have to pay the utility, water utility fee. We already have one, we're just going to transfer it once again. So there's a little bit of that negotiation going on, which is more at the architect manager level with certain powers to be to try to get us as much of a break as we can get on the project. So there's always cost saving things going on here. We know we're pretty good with the budget, we tend to do that. But that's how, that's, that's the, where the cash is coming from side of this. The difference between that and then the bid is the 50,000.
Thank you. All right, any further questions?
I just want to, I just want to make sure that everybody understands that the contingency is, 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 is only there during the, during the process. And we negotiated the, the bids so that we could have a contingency. Because when, you know, bids first came in, they were, they were all way over budget. So that, so this negotiated down to the point where now we have a 50,000 dollar contingency or, or thereabouts. And that that money will, will eventually get spent. contingency or, or thereabouts, and that that money will, will eventually get spent on the project, it's not going to go anywhere.
Time transfer.
And we certainly don't want to go back to the state, as long as, as long as the money's available for our town hall, it should go into the town hall. So when we get to the end of the project and we know that there's going to be a little money left over in that contingency, we can pay the, the entry road, or we can pay the part of the lot, but all that money is going to be spent on the town hall.
Well, not only is it going to be spent on town hall, it has to be by the.
Otherwise, we do have to.
Well, but.
Can you say, can you say that clearly, please?
Not only will we spend all that money on town hall, we have to spend it on town hall. It's not a big pile of money that came in from different grants, it's money that's dedicated to this project. Indeed, if we were to default on that, if for some reason we didn't build, we run into a world hurt, we would be defaulting on all of those, we jeopardize all our future grant cross possibilities, and we're held liable for the land that we bought. So it's very important that everybody know these grants are for this project alone.
This project is not just for town hall, this is for the Marshals Office as well. So this is a community goal.
Well, and the, the best thing about that, and it should be, it can't be stated too often, the portion for the Marshals Department, over twenty percent of the new town hall is dedicated for the Marshals Office, and I think that's something like a hundred and sixteen thousand out of this budget is for safety, the Marshals Department within town hall. Again, you can't say it too often, this is, this is a building for administration, this is a building for the Marshals Office, this is a building for all civic organizations that would request to meet here, and I think that is a, I think that's a big deal, I think that's a great thing for this town. So that being said, should we go on to item two? Approved Resolution twenty fourteen oh three, a resolution accepting the new town hall committee's recommendations and directing staff to provide a contract to the Board of Trustees for review. Matt, you want me to read this, or would you like to go ahead?
I'll, I'll let the mayor of the town read it, but I want to preface this by, Mr. Seaver actually misspoke, that, that I somehow compared all this information, and that he then plagiarized from me, and that would be incorrect. Rob and the committee have done a fantastic job, the project manager, and they actually provided me a summary, which was very helpful to, to draft this resolution. Unless you guys have other questions, I'd, I'd suggest the mayor of the town read it and you guys discuss it.
All right. Resolution twenty fourteen dash oh three, a resolution accepting the new town hall committee's recommendations and directing the town staff to provide a contract to the Board of Trustees for review. Whereas the Board of Trustees of the Town of Green Mountain Falls, Colorado, pursuant to Colorado statute and the Town of Green Mountain Falls municipal code, is vested with the authority of administering the affairs of the Town of Green Mountain Falls, Colorado. Whereas on February twenty-third, twenty-twelve, a fire destroyed the Green Mountain Falls Town Hall. Whereas on February nineteenth, twenty-thirteen, a project manager was assigned to work with Keystone Associates, Inc., architectural firm, and funding for the new town hall was successfully procured. Whereas a new town hall committee was established to facilitate the project of building the new town hall. Whereas on February thirteenth, twenty-fourteen, the town purchased the real property for the new town hall. Whereas on February twentieth, twenty-fourteen, a request for proposal, RFP, for general contractor bids was published in the Colorado Springs Gazette, and on February twenty-sixth, twenty-fourteen, in the Pikes Peak Courier. On March twenty-first, twenty-fourteen, the RFP was closed, and seven bids were returned by the deadline. Whereas the new town hall committee scrutinized the bids, interviewed the two lowest bidders several times, and called previous clients listed as references with exemplary responses. Whereas on March twenty-eighth, twenty-fourteen, the new town hall committee presented its findings to the Town Board of Trustees, and whereas the new town hall committee recommended Ed Green Construction Company be used as the new general, as the general contractor for the new town hall project. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Trustees of the Town of Green Mountain Falls, Colorado, as follows. Recommendation by the committee for contracting with Ed Green Construction Company as the general contractor is accepted. Town staff, including but not limited to interim town manager and town attorney, are to coordinate with Ed Green Construction, Construction Company to bring a contract to the Board of Trustees for review. Introduced, resolved, and passed at a special meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Town of Green Mountain Falls on this twenty-eighth day of March, twenty-fourteen. If anyone has any questions, now is the time. If not, I would like to make a, a general statement about this project. I would like to say, because it needs to be said, community participation and design planning lasted over the last two years, we have had more community participation and great participation. People have a lot of opinions on where we should go with this, and, and we're very grateful. I've already spoken a lot about how it's designed for use by other entities, can't be stressed enough, this can really bring a lot of good things for our town. There was a question at one point about meeting time and date, this has been on our construction calendar, which was revised in November, twenty thirteen. It's really important that everyone keep looking at the construction calendar, we're right on date, we need to stay on target. Everybody who's built here knows, we have a warm weather schedule and we need to stick to it, so thank you, everyone who's here, this is really important. Another question is about our, how around rent, and we do pay, our insurance pays about two thousand dollars a month rent. We need to show that we're making measurable progress so that we can continue to get those rents paid. If we weren't to build town hall, we can't rent forever, the budget just doesn't allow that, so for us to make progress, measurable progress, stay on date is very important. And like I say, you know, this is such an important project. If we were not to build town hall, there's no place for the staff, there's no place for day-to-day business, no town meetings, no planning commission, no town functions, no court, no board, no Marshals Office, done. So essentially, the, the heart of the town will be gone. I just want to say thank you for everyone who's participated in this, this is a big deal. Any further comments?
A comment, I'd just like to acknowledge my colleagues on the planning commission, they, some of them even are, are, maybe more, put a lot of time into this, just doing the research.
Absolutely.
Being on this panel and making decisions, and a lot of people put a lot of hard work into this.
And you were so good about meeting with, with townspeople, with us, and we can't say no thank you to Rob Seaver either, he's just been outstanding, just, just amazing.
Move that we adopt a message, is ready?
A second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Fine. No further discussion?
I ask for a close.
Oh, any opposed? No. John, did you have a comment? Most of passes unanimously. No further comments, this meeting is adjourned. Or do you have further comments? Forty-four.